Readyness program. We have put some things in place for the mandatory promotion piece. That's one of the pieces that we've really taken a look at. And there is a process in place now that we've looked at, but if a parent, if a student is a few points over, you know, the parent still wants to retain them. We're thinking, you know, that might be a conversation that needs to be had in the middle with the principal, the teacher, the parent. And if they can't come to a decision, then there needs to be a process at the district level that we can mediate with that. So anyway, that's what we're asking and we're not asking for a decision tonight.
Are you asking for the pilot to be extended or for it to be part of our?
Part of what we do. We're asking for it to be part of policy.
You know, I'm really glad you added that last part because the excitement is there for all of the strengths of the tool that this rubric provides for those professional developmental input teachers. And it has brought up in the past the question of what have we removed as far as discretion of the parent or discretion of the teacher and that local collaboration that knows the student. You know, quantifying, you know, subject, suggest or subjective data rather than quantitative data is always tough. Sure. I mean, all those things that you know and I don't know, but things like attitude and what's the home environment and is the student socially ready or, you know, meets all of the score for mandatory promotion. Because that was sort of surprised to me when we first started with this was, oh, okay, they meet this minimum score, so I'm sorry, I don't care what you say, parent, teacher, principal, team, the numbers say they have to go on. And I know that's not what we're about. And so the message in past years was keep up the good work you've been working on. It sounds like you've worked on it and even addressed that, that aspect of a way to sort of mediate or mitigate or come to a good decision using the data, but also using those subjective things and all those kind of things. So that's encouraging.
Like I said, you read this every year and we look at the process to see what's working because it needs to work for parents.
I can speak personally to this one because it's happened at my school and this is the second year in a row. Last year, we had a student who barely, barely made the rubric score and teacher was in favor, I was in favor, and parent worked in favor of keeping the child back just for various reasons not to discuss, but went on and we caught, we caught her then at the first grade level. And she kind of struggled through first grade and we felt like if this maybe would have been in place, then we could have had kindergarten over again with the beginning basic skills and then maybe not so much of a struggle and a hardship on the student to, you know.
And the classroom.
And the classroom and the, uh-huh. And then I've got one this year that we just met with the parent today and the child's sitting right there and they're like, oh, no, please do not, please don't send her on. She's just turned five, you know, in August and, and so I think this is, in my role, this is huge for me with working with parents and.
I'd just like to thank the committee for your work. I know it is a lot of work and I think Mr. Huguen and I were looking at, I think, twenty-nine kindergarten teachers this afternoon. And my understanding is this is pretty universal among kindergarten teachers and you don't get twenty-nine people to agree on something a whole lot very often and without a lot of time and work and effort going into it. And folks, the data really demonstrates, we may not have thought we could substantially lower, that may not have been the goal of this, but it does make sense that when parents and teachers and kids are working together, when communication improves, that that's a very likely outcome of we're gonna, we're gonna have more success. And so I applaud you because this came from teachers. And, and so great work and thanks, Roy and everyone.
Is this new to our district? I mean, this is our baby grade.
Yeah, I'm not aware of, I mean, I'm sure there's other places doing some kind of things, but I haven't heard other districts.
No, we started this new year in the news a ton about. I was told that. And it really fits right into what Dr. Watson was saying about kindergarten readiness. We don't know what that's going to look like, but we're one step ahead of the first and the second grade readiness, so gotta feel pretty good about that.
I'd like to challenge the board that's sitting now to consider speaking on behalf of this program because I really feel like you get a hold of something that can really change lives of kiddos and to improve the educational process. I think it's our duty to share that. And the last time we did that was with Common Core and it was a good activity for the board at the time to go through that process, to work together as a team. And I thought it was a good opportunity to share with other people across the state what we learned and I think it's a good thing. So I'd like everybody, I'd challenge everybody to consider doing that. When would we have to know?
Well, KSB conferences in the first week of December, the deadline to apply to present is in July. So that's probably seven weeks after the side here by the middle of June, end of June, so we could get an, oh, end of June, so we could get an application put together to work as an artist and do that.
It does work better if the court unanimous because it looks kind of silly, you have three board members going to do it because everybody's like, why are we the other four? Because it needs to be a full court press if we're gonna go to the, to that extent. Yeah. Sure.
I kind of wonder, I know I for one would feel, even though I'm excited about this and we've got a lot of information from this team, I think the team is the one that presented because they're the ones that can really respond to all of those questions.
Sure. I think the important thing is getting the information out there. I hate to volunteer those teams that I'm not part of, but.
They're so proactive and with their very little means that they have after school. They even sent out a survey, they didn't tell me about it beforehand, they sent it out to all their teachers that were at the committee meeting and just to see what they thought about the readiness program, the mandatory retention type of, oh, my gosh, what kind of results have we given back? They were all for it. I don't know that any, anybody was against it, correct? Or, yeah, I was shocked.
The word around is you gotta have the rubric because it makes a difference with your job. It's just that simple. It really helps you to have everything in order. It's that simple.
It's kind of deviating.
Was that what a parent?
That is to the teachers.
Sorry, I missed that. Sorry.
I did want to ask this before though because it was sort of presented as, you can read the question. The rubric is applied to all children or only the ones you think need to be evaluated?
We use it to simply evaluate the children that start to struggle or are struggling when they walk in our doors. And we have some that we know from the screening this past week that are going to struggle. So we use it in that indication. We're careful how we use it. No, it doesn't need to be applied to all children. We have many children who are very successful, but what we do is we apply it if we think we need to to certain students to see. We let their parents know upfront, we let them know when we'll do it. They can come and ask us and visit with us, they have questions, but we do that selectively. We're very careful about that.
I did apply it to all students from that second year parent teacher conferences. And I felt like for some parents, it proved to them their child was ready. They didn't have, you know, they had a good score, they were doing well on all those subskills. And I think it gave them some confidence about their child going on to first grade.
And important alignment piece is the midpoint part because as we were developing the exit criteria, we were seeing, but we were speaking to parents about this all year long and it just made sense that the report card that they were seeing the end of the year had the very same information on it. So you're going to see that alignment in the first and second grade.
Yeah, that's what bang a window for a win. There's not, I mean, I don't want there to be a misconception that this rubric isn't for everyone because it is for everyone. I mean, we're making sure that everybody's ready for first grade, but you can tell early on because of that alignment with the grade card and with the assessments, who's struggling a little bit harder and you can then begin having those conversations, so.
But it's helpful to me because I know early on when we talk about Common Core, when we talk about implementing sort of innovative, which is very innovative programs, and we start collecting all this data, that discussion about data and what data they keep in on my child and what implications mine could have. And then when we kicked in with this program, the mandatory promotion side of it, then all of a sudden it was like, okay, how are we using this data? It makes total sense with professional teachers and the kind of cracker jam crew that we have here to use some discretion there and not use it as sort of an autocratic system, but more as what it sounds like it is, which is an evaluation and teaching tool.
What I also really appreciate about this is how it developed. I mean, this happened at faculty meetings. Teachers were like, my kids are this far apart, you know, and I'm teaching a mile wide. And so that complaint was hers. The board acted with administration as a complete team with, with the teachers in the trenches. And this kind of was a, you know, I just think it was a good activity and us listening, teachers talking, administrative support, people willing to forum committees and work outside of class time. I mean, just a really, a good list of awesome things happened for this product to be created. So I'm not trying to pat myself on the back or administration, but I think it was pretty awesome how this developed. It's a great process.
I just have a quick question, maybe it's more clarification. And so you're recommending setting up a process for parents who wish to retain their, so is that something that the committee would do or that you're recommending that the administration does that? Or is it a collaboration?
We're just recommending it to improve the process. We do now have that process in place for the mandatory promotions, but I think it's kind of a stigma point and I think everybody's comfortable in that now. So we're just asking them to recommend the readiness programs.
Is that what you were asking? Were you asking what this piece looks like?
I guess I'm kind of asking, but that.
Okay, I thought that's what you were saying. Our beginning discussions have been, I mean, we kind of brainstormed several things. Do you ladies want to touch on that? I feel like I'm talking a lot. I'm excited about this. I mean, several things can happen, but if there's, take for instance, it was in place right now and the parent comes in to me and says, I really want my child retained, then we can have those conversations. And then I suppose what I would do if it was in place right now is I would ask them, you know, take a tiddling in and, but one thing we've looked at is having like a, like a little panel made up of different principals, the one from the building and maybe like two others that can go and present the case and say, hey, I've got one here, she's passed the rubric, but for this reason and this reason, parents are requesting this, we agree with the retention and promote it that way. But I hope that's bid set. Is that kind of what we were?
That's, that's kind of what we discussed.
We're keeping it at the building level.
Keeping it at the building level.
Yes. Don't bring it up here.
No.
Yeah, if they can't agree, then we won't have a discussion. But for the most part, I think they're very grateful.
I think the big idea is that it becomes a team decision. It becomes something that they can look at with the principal, with the teacher, with the parent and we may need to bring in another principal or another teacher to help get a good perspective. Really look at, again, the goal here is to make the best decision for that particular student towards a team process.
Thank you. Would you leave a list of the pilot next week's targets? Any other questions? Thank you very much.
From current slide. Escape that from current slide. I guess scroll down that.
Can you hop off?
There, what that one?
It's better when she, it was like.
Yeah.
Over the last couple of board meetings, I'm kind of giving you an update on where we've been at various points in time with the changes to legislature and what potential bills are moving through. Not much has changed since the last time we talked. Currently, the Senate substitute for how children present five is still, pretty much was laid out on the table. It was, nothing's changed because I presented it last time. A little caveat is that it may change in the future depending on what happens with the court case and decisions that come out of that here and hopefully the reason for the near future. But until we have anything different, that's kind of what we're moving forward with. And that's kind of how I'm gonna start planning my budget over the next few weeks, so.
I just wanted to give you a lot of big relief and I'm trying to be all the schools before schools out just sharing the same information that the board received that KJ put together. But also we've, we've added stuff that I think it's just kind of interesting for our staff to know and real quickly I want to run through some of what we're sharing with them. This is kind of a work in progress as, as other kind of topics or questions come up, we add to this, but this is the NAAT data from Kansas. NAAT is given in grades, National Assessment of Education Raunters, given in grades four, eight, twelve. Well, we want to compare ourselves with other states. This is a good one to give or to look at because it's, it's required by the U.S. Department of Education, so it is given in all states. And where it falls down a little bit is not all kids take it. It is, it's a random sample, but it's statistically controlled by the U.S. Department Ed. So to give you a little idea, this is all kids, all scores. So in 2003, we were tenth out of fifty-two states. Now, that includes B.C. and, and Puerto Rico, so don't think I forgot my U.S. geography. Two thousand five, we were tenth, two thousand seven, seven, two thousand nine, eleventh, two thousand eleven, thirteen. And again, this is grades four and eight data. If you look at our kids that qualified for free and reduced lunch, Kansas went seventh, tenth, seven, sixth, seventh. Pretty amazing numbers. Well, we all know that in two thousand nine, things kind of got tough across the country. For a while, we had stimulus dollars in our budget and it's been a slow climb out of that and, and really a lot of states have started to reinvest in their public school systems and Kansas really hasn't done that to a great extent. So if we look at the next two years and we look at the numbers that we're seeing, they don't look as good as what Kansas has become accustomed to seeing. So in two thousand thirteen, we were eighteenth and two thousand fifteen, we were twenty-third. If you, if you just look at the single-digit numbers between two thousand three and two thousand eleven, you see mostly single-digit numbers. If you look in the last two columns, you see one single-digit number. So as we talked about, we've cut about two and a half million dollars out of our budget over the last three years. That's been happening all across the state and you're starting to see the effect of fewer resources on our, on our, on our results. One of the things that, you know, we look at is teacher pay and the darker the blue, oops, need backup. The, the darker the blue, and I'm down watching, I'm gonna do this a little area. Darker the blue, better the pay. So you can see Kansas with our three neighboring states, we, Colorado, Nebraska, Missouri, we're behind and we're tied with Oklahoma. When you look at our, when you look at administrator pay, it's the same thing, our three neighboring states pay better. When you look at the specific numbers, National Center for Education Statistics, Kansas ranked twelve, thirteen, ranked forty-second. Euro Labor Statistics in thirteen, fourteen ranked as forty-fifth. Twelve, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, according to the National Education Association, were thirty-eighth and thirty-ninth. And when you think back to those NAAT scores and when you look at other measures, Kansas has typically been between fifth and fifteenth in terms of student achievement, but we're really not probably keeping up on this end of things with what we're doing, with what we're doing for our teachers. And I get that the average person out there probably doesn't see that, but, you know, I didn't make these numbers up, these, these come out of, it's built from these sources.
Is this strictly dollars or does it consider cost of learning based on what they're at?
No, this is, this is strictly dollars across all. It doesn't factor in cost of learning.
But does it factor in packages too or help care things like that?
I believe that is just average compensation. That doesn't include dollars, that's just salary. One thing you're gonna hear out there is Kansas spends plenty of money on education. We're spending a lot, we're just not getting it to the right places. Well, this is from KSB and this is looking at all district expenditures sixty, across the state, sixty-one percent goes directly to classrooms, teachers, supplies, that kind of stuff. Nine point eight-five goes to operations and maintenance. In our district, we have twenty-one buildings, eighteen of those are schools. So the vast majority of this money goes directly into schools. And what does it pay for? It pays to fix the roof when it leaks. It pays to repair, replace the carpet. It pays custodians to keep the rooms clean. And, and as I've talked in every school I've been to, and I think I've, Roy and I have two left, every school I've been to, the people that are at these meetings say that makes a difference with our kids. That helps us in our classrooms and we don't want you to stop doing that. School administration's five point eight percent. The number one factor, school-based factor that affects the quality of a kid's education is the classroom teacher. Number two is school leadership. Student services, counselors, nurses, librarians, those people would follow here. They're not in the classroom every day, so they can't, they don't count down here. But again, every school says those people are important. They make a difference in what our kids, in what our kids do in class. Food service is almost five percent. And I joke, this one's fairly easy, we can just stop doing it. Every kid brings a sack lunch. But how many of our kids will tell without a sack? And then what's gonna happen with them? Transportation, four percent. Again, I kind of, this wasn't a question on my test to be Dr. Carlin, but I'm, I'm almost a hundred percent positive that if we don't give the kids to the classrooms, the teacher can't teach them. And if we transport over forty percent of our kids, over three thousand kids a day we transport. Some would be at school whether we transported or not, but many will not. Instructional support, this is parents, curriculum, people, instructional coaches and other support services and general administration or people in this building, special ed, business office, my office. And so when you look at, you know, you keep hearing the dollars that affect classrooms, every one of those areas makes a difference in what goes on in our classrooms. Every one of those areas is in the classroom every day, but without these other pieces, our classrooms would not look like, like they do. This is something you're gonna hear, Kansas spends, Kansas is second or third in the country in state general fund spending on K-12 education. So here's Kansas, this is true, that's true, Kansas does that. Most of you know I came from Wyoming and it gets us where Wyoming is, right down here, second to last. So if I was a parent and I was moving to Wyoming or Kansas and I chose to come to Kansas, I'd probably be pretty happy with my decision when I heard that we spend second or third in the country in our percent of state general fund spending is on K-12 education. But if we look at this a different way, this combines all of the state, local and federal funding, every dollar we give and divide by the number of kids we serve. Kansas spends eleven thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars per pupil. That's eight hundred dollars below the national average. Here's Kansas, this line is the national average.
Will you say what the colors are?
The gray is, is.
Local.
Local. The orange is state and the blue is federal.
Where's Wyoming?
Where's Wyoming? Wyoming is fifth. So as, as that mom or dad, that might change your feeling about that decision. The reason Wyoming can do this is they just don't put the money in their state general fund before they give it to schools. Those of you who were on the board two years ago, remember the twenty mils of property taxes that were levied? Those stayed here, they came from the county clerk directly to KJ and she put them in our bank. Two years ago, the state changed the rules and we now send that money, the county clerk sends that money to the state and then the state sends that money to us when they think we're ready for it. We still get the same amount of money, but it now goes to the state general fund first and then comes to us, but it, it doesn't change the amount of money we receive. Well, maybe that's only an accounting gimmick for some, but I've talked to the superintendents in some small communities like me and Hugaton, and those dollars used to go into their local banks, their bank on Main Street. Now those dollars go to Topeka. And in some of those small districts, when interest rates were a little better, they might make forty or fifty thousand dollars a year in interest, which would pay for another teacher for them. Now that money's kept by the state. So while it, while it's true to say Kansas spends second or third most in state general fund spending on K-12, it's really misleading when you look at the dollars that we actually have to work with, with kids. You might also hear that Kansas spends more today on it, on K-12 than we ever have. And folks, the numbers are astronomical. In, in two thousand nine, Kansas spent five point six billion dollars on schools, but we educated almost four hundred and fifty thousand kids. But that's a big number, that's a lot of money. In two thousand fifteen, we aren't, we're gonna spend just a little over six billion dollars. So it is true that we're spending more now than we ever have. But if you adjust for inflation, just adjust for inflation. The red line is what we actually have and what we've actually, what we actually spent. The green line is if we start in two thousand nine and we adjust for inflation, we're over two hundred and thirty million dollars behind where we should be as a state. The other thing is we're educating almost fifteen thousand more kids today than we did in two thousand nine. And it costs money to educate every one of those kids. And in the past, we've been funded based on the number of kids we have. If you add, increase that funding, we're in the three hundred million dollar range behind. So while you hear we're spending more than we ever have, and that's true, not one of us would expect to run our household without accounting for the increase in the cost of a loaf of bread, the increase in the cost for an oil change when you take your car down to get it changed, a gallon of milk. Those things cost more than they did and so do our supplies and, and, you know, we, we want our employees to be able to keep up with the cost of living. So these are just some of the things just to share with you. There, there is a lot of misinformation, some things that are true but that are misleading, some things that may not be true that end up being out there. But we really want to try to put accurate information out for people and so Roy and I are working hard to do that. We're gonna have a section of our website that will have some of this updated information to try to keep, keep accurate stuff out there. So. Questions?
Bridge to the bar.
I just wanted to know, let you know your superintendent is doing something.
Anything else on finding? Chair, you know, we will move on to the new business on foreign education meeting dates
Yeah, we gave you a list of all the dates. We'll approve August and on at our organizational meeting in July, but we do need to set the dates tonight for July. And it's probably not a whole lot of, much to argue unless you want to come to a board meeting on July fourth. Looking at where the, where the Monday's fall. And so I think what's proposed is the eleventh and the twenty-fifth.
Are there any comments on that?
I think that's right. I know we approved July eleventh and twenty-fifth as our meeting dates for twenty sixteen.
I'll send it.
All in favor, Richard? Any of ours saying same thing?
Real quick, I would call your attention when you were reviewing those other dates, note that we stopped doing the Friday mornings and we're proposing like Thursday, five or five, Thursday or? Five?
Tired of me coming to my bathroom.
Well, we thought it might be more convenient for people to catch, catch them at the end of the day and then to make them get up in the morning, some are delivering kids and, and, but we're, you know, you may have some thoughts on that, so please. kids and, and, but we're, you know, you may have some thoughts on that. So please let me know what your thinking is on it. And most of those are five-minute meetings, hopefully.
Thank you. Very appropriate. Okay, next, moving on, we have the board open discussion. Is there anything anybody wants to bring up? I'll let you leave the meeting. I'll shut the call.
Well, there's a lot of things to say because there's a lot of cool stuff going on this time of the year. So I, you know, I almost need to mention any of it because I'll leave up without a bunch of it. But I'm just proud of our district. I'm proud of our kids and our staff. It's always shocking to see how many people are leaving. You know, parting is such sweet sorrow, you know, particularly when they've been with the district for a long time. That work to get new teachers in is, I, you know, I just want to encourage the team. I know they're working hard, and it's a challenge to get those positions filled. And so there's, there's a real anxiety there, even though I know they're doing a great job. The information we've been given is concerning. And, and it is exciting to see the programs that are being implemented. Grow Your Own Teachers, the proposed incentive for student teaching to help that situation out. And then the incentive of teachers, particularly from out of state, but anywhere, that, that encourage someone to come to USD457. And they're hired, that there's a, there's an incentive there for existing teachers. There's just a lot going on. And a lot of interest and concern, so I could go on and on. But our kids are just amazing. We saw a sample of that here tonight, and our staff. And so I'm pretty proud of USD457.
Oh, I just wanted to go through the numbers of how many kids we graduated this last weekend. It was four, 49?
Yeah.
At the high school?
In that number.
That actually walked. And then how many of the alternates?
I think we had 51 that walked, but probably close to, it's close to 70, but maybe not quite. 68, 69 total.
Is that pushing a record?
That would be a record.
We can celebrate that stuff. That's awesome. That's amazing. So good job. And I thought the ceremony went really well. There were a few parents I wish would have sent this, but the kids did great.
And the board members. I know that one of the board members had a move. I don't know.
I know. Can we see that again?
No.
Come on, you board member.
No, I'll, I'll wait. Thank you. I, I did have something I wanted to bring up. And I understand the timeframe on the Royal High School initiative is rapidly approaching to that line. And I did want to mention that, you know, as we are getting diminished funding from the state, we depend more and more on our local funding. And when we participate in these programs, we diminish the amount of money that we are going to receive locally for a period of time. And that's money that we really are dependent on in these days with looking at, you know, how we're doing nationally. So I, I just wanted to make sure that, I guess, I, my view on that is that these things are really starting to take away funding that we need at our core. They are cutting us to the quick. And while I, I think it's really important to participate in improving things for the citizens of Garden City and to participate as a good citizen in helping the development of Garden City, at some level, and I don't know what that is, in the future, we may have to, to draw back from being able to do that. Just because our own, the effectiveness of our own organization is starting to something we need to consider a real war than, than our participation in the development that we have at the moment. So I, I guess I just want to make sure though, that that's out there, that this isn't, we're not sort of a deep well of money, sort of like the transportation department has apparently been in the state, that, that there is a limit to what we can absorb and what we can forego and can still maintain the core things that we need to do as an organization for the students of Garden City. Because what we need to do is really basic to what is important to development of Garden City. All of these other things aren't going to happen. We're not going to have very businesses and industry want to come here. If they're looking at those same statistics that you're kind of showing tonight, we want to be able to present a top-notch school system, strictly a top-notch system for, for all of the students. And that's really core to anybody coming here. So it's really important that we, we look at these in the future very hard and very carefully to see if this is something that we can participate in, or if we really need to, to, to just draw back and try to maintain what we, what we have.
I might comment that that's sobering.
Well, it is, but so is that finding.
It certainly is. And therefore, I think it's, it's very appropriate, the way the staff, the district here has developed things like the, the culture. You know, if we're going to shoot for being an exceptional district, we'd like to be that way in all environments. And it's kind of nice to have that listed out there so that when we deliberate on our goals, how to change or modify them with the resources that we have, we can keep that in mind. And we still want to be great when we do. And, and we've got to have some things to help us think through that process so that we don't cut the wrong things. And so I think it's just really good that, that I think the staff and past board actions have set us up to be able to do that. As sobering as the, the outlook is, there's still some blessings to be counted.
I would follow you, Mark. We had our retreat recently, and it was a great opportunity for us to do some good work as a board. And, but I felt like we didn't really have enough time. Everybody was exhausted. It was after nine o'clock before we left. And, you know, there were several discussion items that I'd love to hear everybody's perspective on, that we really didn't have a chance to, to get to. So, you know, we talked, Laura and I, the agenda sitting meeting with Dr. Carlin this last week, and we talked about options, having another retreat here, having Dr. Carlin suggest a topic each board meeting to kind of bring it up and discuss it, you know, in session here. So I just wanted to, on behalf of Laura, who couldn't be here tonight, ask everyone that if you have things that you want to discuss. I know there's some things flying around, the perception under Dr. Carlin or Laura, and we'll talk about bringing them up.
Yeah, and we're going to, we'll send an email out. One option would be, our June meetings, we have a June 6th, and then our morning meeting on the 30th. And I know summer's a tough time, but if we wanted to do another short retreat, maybe take a couple more hours, one evening sometime in June, would there be, is there interest in doing that? Or do we want to kind of tack these on as one, one topic and put them towards the end of the agenda on the other summer meetings? Kind of get what your preference would be. So you don't need to tell us tonight that you might think about it. You know, what do you think would be a better, a better way to, to discuss those things?